Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas. Mayor Rainey.
Present. BOC meeting, January the 7th, 2021 is called to order. Commissioner Dawson, if you'll let us in our prayer and pledge, please.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we gather here as members of this board, and we thank you for calling us together. It is our privilege and our responsibility to support, foster, and serve the city of Fairview. We accept this task in total dependence upon you, for it is you who begin this work, you who will guide this work, and you who will bring it to fulfillment. Enable us to draw upon your wisdom and experience of yesterday as we respond to the questions and concerns of tomorrow's. Give us freedom to speak the truth boldly with kindness. Give us patience to listen openly without prejudice. Give us wisdom to discern what is right and good and just. All glory and honor and praise are yours, forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dawson. Approval of agenda and executive session announcements. We will be having an executive session this afternoon, tonight, after the meeting. It'll last about 20 minutes. There should not be anything we need to vote on when we come back, but the meeting will be adjourned after the meeting.
Who'd approve agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Number five, public hearings. There are none today, tonight. I don't know why I keep thinking it's today. Citizen comments. Ms. Johnson, do we have any?
There are none tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Public announcements, awards, and recognitions. There are none tonight. Staff comments. Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, I have one item for you tonight. You may recall that I sent an email to you approximately two weeks ago advising you that our park programmer in Bowie Park who worked at the nature center has submitted her reservation. We certainly support her in that. We understand the reasons that she did that. She had some family considerations. And we are kind of excited for Nancy and what her next chapter brings. She's done a really good job for us at the park. That said, we have some challenges as it relates to the park and the operations of the park, and they've been brought about by a few things largely out of the city's control. Obviously, COVID-19 coronavirus has changed things over the last nearly 12 months. The participation that we have for group events obviously has dwindled. Group activities, other things that we normally would have done through a park programmer simply don't make sense to continue, or at least continue the effort at this time. There's just not the workload, the programs, the organized activities that we have had in years past. Some of you may also recall that in 2019, prior to COVID-19 and some of the health considerations that we have today, we also had some dwindling numbers as it related to our summer programs and some other activities in the park. So with that, I don't think it is the best use of the city's resources at this time to go back and refill a full-time, permanent position where we're not clear what the full-time, permanent duties of that position would be. As all of you are aware, over the last several months, there's been some discussion about future activities in the park, development in the park, and I don't mean development as in a negative development of the park. I mean in a development of activities or services such within the park. Given that, my first interest in this was to, or exercising this, was to reach out to the Friends of Bowie Nature Park to gauge their interest in doing some volunteer hours to open the nature center on weekends, a few hours each day, in exchange for a monetary donation to the Friends of Bowie Nature Park and to offer them some office space so that they would have an office space in the park, in the nature center. We would offer them some financial contribution monthly with the understanding and knowledge that any money the city assisted with the Friends of Bowie Nature Park would ultimately be returned back to the park. That's their effort and their purpose. Unfortunately, the friends reported back that at this time, they're just not able to commit to some temporary hours or volunteer hours such as that, and I understand that. But with that brings about another opportunity for us to make some considerations within the park. So as a second or plan B, right now, I'm working on a partnership with the high school, Fairview High School, to work through a couple of organizations and student groups they have to work with them to have the nature center staffed a few hours a day on Saturdays and a few hours a day on Sundays at the peak time so that we can make sure the nature center is open for review, enjoyment, use of the restrooms, observance of the classrooms, things that we have within the nature center that makes sense. Obviously, we would compensate them in a part-time manner to get us through really the spring and summer with the real understanding and expectation that there's going to be no coordinated activities within the park, at least through the summer, and likely into the school year of next year. It just doesn't make sense at this time that that's going to change. In fact, we expect it to taper off even more. There's just not the safe operation of that. With that, I'm going to meet with each of you. I think it would be really best for the staff, certainly for the city and for the community, if we could, as a city and as a board, identify whatever the long-term or short-term operational plan for the park or park system is going to look like. Obviously, we want to get the most use of the resource. We want to get the most for the community. We want to make sure that we're getting the most we can for our investment. But I think we need to have a substantive plan for the park and the future of the park and its operations before we make a reinvestment in staff that really doesn't have a direction that we need to consider for the park. So as we leave here tonight, my report to you is that we're going to work to staff part-time on the weekends, the nature center, to have it open under certain hours. Obviously, the weekday operations of the nature center and the park are unchanged. We have enough staff out there that we can keep up with the weekly activities or interests there would be. Again, they're relatively small. We also have a park ranger on duty, eight hours every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So it's not as if there's no representation of staff in the park. On the weekends, we only have park ranger working anyway. So through this effort, we will likely have increased open hours on the weekends, decreased open hours or activity hours during the week, but they were nonexistent before we arrived here. So as soon as I can get staffing done part-time, hopefully with students or a partnership through a group affiliated with the school, I will email you that information. And secondary to that, I will email out some information to you guys is a simple request for the development of a short-term or longer short-term and long-term operational plan for the park so we can make sure when we do make staffing investments and other investments in the park that they are what are perceived to be the preferred adopted plan for the park via resolution or ordinance passed by the Board of Commissioners. So that's my report for you tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions any of you have regarding that item.
Mr. Collins, we're not going to be taking that FTE out of the budget. Just it's going to be a cost savings by not filling it, correct?
Correct. And the cost savings will be minimal because we are going to spend some of those dollars on the part-time staff. So there will be some leftover dollars on there. But the interest, even so far as when we review the budget that begins July 1, 2021, which is right around the corner, that position will still be fully funded within the budget. There's going to be no evaporation or removal of that position. It just doesn't make sense for me to fill it without some adopted Board of Commissioners' plan for what we're going to do with the park long-term.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, that money will go to a group at the school, not, there'll be some sort of organization from the school?
I'm open to either or. If there's an organization who wants to volunteer time and then have an in-kind donation from the city be made for that, if that can work, that's great. If it turns out to be students who are working part-time and can put their time there for that thing, I'm open to that as well. My primary goal is to make sure that we have some operational hours on Saturdays and Sundays. The mechanism behind that, I'm relatively indifferent to as long as we can make sure that it benefits the city and the operation of the nature center.
Any other questions, Mr. Collins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, consent agenda.
Who'd approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Number 10, old business. There is none. Number 11, new business, release of deed of trust for Joseph Chester from 2004 home program grant. Is Mr. Chester here, or do we just, this is just a virtual release?
No, Mayor, this is, this is a request by staff that really would have no option to adopt otherwise because it's simply an obligation release.
Okay. Do we need a motion and a second for this? Do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to ask if, is there anything like that that Fairview has right now? Are we doing any kind of programs like that anymore, or it's all expired?
No, sir, it's all expired.
I've already asked those questions because I like that idea. Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Dawson.
Wow, this is the beginning of the year. Super excited to serve with each and every one of you. Sad that Commissioner Lucas was not able to be here this evening. But we've got big, big plans ahead of us for the city of Fairview for 2021 and really looking forward to serve with this commission here. And my prayer is for unity for this board, also for the United States, and for us to come together and move forward into 2021. We've got exciting things ahead of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Butler.
Rod, I echo Rod's great comments. No further comments tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Just really excited for all of us to work together and just do great things for the city of Fairview.
I'm also looking forward to a great year. Commissioner Lucas is very upset. He's had, I think maybe this may be only two meetings he's missed. So I take that to mean he really does not feel like being here. With that, do I hear a motion that we go to executive session? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Butler. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
So we will adjourn to the executive session. If y'all want to hang out until we're finished, all we're going to do is come back out and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, at this time I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Who do adjourn?
We're adjourned.
Look at this.
Did you get your 20 minutes and I forgot to time it?
Tim.
Tim? Alt.